Welcome to the Wednesday, February 3rd. This is a special assessment hearing for Harbor Lane. I guess that's all. I'll turn it over to Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Dave Reese with Wood Seth Smith Nolting. We're the project engineer that's prepared the feasibility report for the Harbor Lane improvements. This is the preliminary improvement hearing. And I'll be going through the highlights of the feasibility study that was prepared. Once I'm done with that, we'll have a period of time where people can come up and ask questions. First, we'll ask the council if you have any questions after the presentation. Then we'll have folks that are here tonight and in the audience have their opportunity to come up to the podium, state their name and address, and ask their questions. And then anyone that is online or on a Zoom meeting will give them their opportunity to do so. So if you're on a Zoom meeting, just raise your hand at that point, and TJ will unmute you and allow you to do that, okay? So we'll just go through the study to begin with. Okay. As stated, this is the preliminary improvement hearing for Harbor Lane. First, in the step of procedures that need to be done for a special assessment project in accordance with Chapter 429, okay? Harbor Lane is Project Area 3 in the 2021 Street Improvement Projects. There's a total of five project areas, and it includes Harbor Lane, Rushmore Boulevard and Trail, Wildwind Ranch Drive, Birch Narrows Road, and then a series of overlays of Whitefish Avenue and other roads on Manhattan Point. This summer's projects are part of the capital improvement plan that was reviewed by the Public Works Commission and approved by the City Council to move forward through the feasibility study stage. So this is where we're at. A little bit more detail about the project area, the extent of the project area. It's described as beginning at the intersection with County State Aid 16. It would proceed northerly up to the east-west portion of Harbor Lane and matching up to a younger segment of pavement that was upgraded more recently. So it was just past the entrance into the properties, including the resort area there. This segment of roadway does not have an established right-of-way, so that has a bearing on some of the things that we can do as far as the proposed improvements. Essentially, we'll be working within the area that the city has been maintaining, including the cleared area of the roadway. The reason for this project is, one, is this particular segment of roadway was last surfaced back in 1997 with an overlay. It's getting quite aged and oxidized with pavement surface becoming more porous. It accepts water more readily. It's becoming a more regular maintenance concern for city staff, including some of these areas that need to be patched, deeper and wider cracks. The drainage off the roadway is eroding along the edge of the pavement in this particular area in the photo upper-left, where it goes into an adjacent wetland. And this has been an item of routine maintenance that city staff has had to continually go out there and repair. Also, the road shape itself has become somewhat compromised, and it's become a concern for, you know, snow plowing, keeping a blade on the road and being able to plow it adequately. We get this from time to time when a road gets out of shape and you can't keep the blade on it, or when it becomes oxidized to the point where you start to pull gravel off the surface. So it's at a point where we feel a full-depth reclamation of the pavement, which means grinding the pavement and the soil material beneath the pavement and blending it to create a new base would be the best option rather than overlaying the roadway. If we overlaid it, you're overlaying an oxidized surface with a lot of voids in it, and the cracks that we see that are getting wider every year will reflect back through, including these patched areas. So if we reclaim it, then we have a chance to start from a good base. We'll add additional Class 5 aggregate base to that, elevating the roadway and shaping in a good crown, and then paving it again with a two-and-a-half-inch-thick bituminous pavement section. So looking out for the long term, we feel that's the correct solution for this segment of old roadway. And also, with those improvements, handling the runoff that's been causing the erosion, and that can be done with either bituminous gutter or curb or concrete gutter and curb and a spillway. And this is a solution that we've used on numerous roads around the city in the past to help guide that water down to the low point and let it dissipate where it's headed anyway, and keep it from eroding the shoulders on the way there. So we haven't designed the road yet, but we have an idea of what we want to do with the road, and we've estimated the costs for what we're proposing to do in this study. This slide is a section of the proposed road section itself. We'll have the reclaimed, salvaged reclaimed materials to build upon, some virgin Class 5 aggregate base added to that, and then the pavement section. The width of the pavement will essentially remain the same, and we'll be dressing the shoulders up with topsoil and seed. And in the case where the curb or gutter goes, we'll be dealing with that in the steeper slope areas going down to the lower area there. This is the cost estimate. It includes all the items that we mentioned in the proposed improvements. It also includes a little bit of common excavation and granular borrow. There's a few signs on this roadway that there may be some buried stumps in the subgrade.
Can you pull that up a little bit, please?
Sure. Okay. So the... Let me grab this. That took away the enlargement. So the common excavation, select granular borrow items are intended to give us the ability to excavate some of the materials that we may find after reclaiming the roadway. And that might include organic material, wood, or other items that are causing some of the pavement distress out there, okay? Now zoom in on the summary here. So all of these work items ultimately result in an estimate of what the construction costs would be. As I said, we haven't designed the project yet, and we haven't bid it yet, but this is based on our best available information from past years' bid pricings. We're estimating with a 10% construction contingency around $134,000 for the construction. The engineering, administrative, and legal costs is, at this time, an estimate of 20% of the construction cost, which is around $27,000. So our total estimated project cost is around $161,000. Okay. We've gone through what was proposed for the improvements, the estimate of cost. The assessment part of this program includes a methodology of assessing based on the benefit received by the properties. And to determine that, the city commissioned a licensed appraiser to look at the roadway, look at the properties, type of properties that are there, and give us a range of benefit that they would see each property experiencing. And it changes a little bit based on whether it's lakefront or non-lakefront, or vacant land versus land that has structures on it. So, for instance, single-family residential home on the lake would benefit between $5,000 to $10,000 per lot. Off-lake, on the order of $4,000 to $8,000. And for vacant land on the lake, $4,000 to $8,000. Off-lake, $2,000 to $6,000. What the city is proposing to do is assess $4,000 per lot. Now, that's toward the bottom of the benefit opinion range on some of the lakefront and non-lakefront that has structures. It's right about at the bottom of non- or lakefront vacant land, and it's right in the middle of non-lake vacant land. So we feel that this is a reasonable assessment or benefit to the property for each property. If we look at the total number of parcels that are within the project area and seen as benefiting, that would be a total number of 10 parcels, and that would generate roughly $40,000 in assessments, meaning that the city would be picking up $121,000 or so of the project cost. Okay? This slide gives us the procedural schedule. So we're at the February 3rd Hearing on Improvement stage. And the next step would be for the City Council to consider a resolution approving the project and preparation of plans. So this would be a set of plans that includes all five project areas bid under one contract. And that will probably not happen tomorrow night, but at the February 8th City Council meeting where that resolution will be addressed, okay? Moving on from that, we'll open bids targeting March and pending award of a contract that construction would likely begin after load limits are off on the roads, which could be May 15th or earlier. Oftentimes, what we've seen is the construction would not begin until after Memorial Day weekend, and usually, within a four-to-six-week period, the work of this scope could be completed. The schedule is up to the contractor on that, but the contractor is required to keep access to property available and keep traffic passing through the construction zone. So once we get through the construction, typically, we'll hold a second hearing, and that would be the final assessment hearing, where once again, everyone would be noticed of the meeting and have an opportunity to speak to the council regarding the assessments. The assessment role would be prepared, and after approval by the City Council, that would... there would be a 30-day period where residents could pay their assessment in full without incurring any interest. After that, the role would be certified to the county auditor for taxes payable beginning in the year 2022, okay? And as far as the term and period of the assessments, that's a decision that's made by the City Council. In the past, it's been over a 10-year period, and generally, 1% to 2% over the borrowing rate that the city's experienced with the bonding for the project. With a bonded project, the city is required to assess a minimum of 20% of the project cost. Based on the five project areas that we have, we're looking at assessing approximately 41% at this point, okay? All right. So that concludes the presentation that I prepared to give. Does the council have any questions?
At the end of your presentation there, Dave, you said it's 40%?
The... When bonding for a project, the minimum is 20% of the project is required to be assessed.
Right. But the project's $160,000.
Right. On this particular project area, the city is picking up the vast majority of the project cost because...
40% on all five of them.
On all five of them, we're at about 41%.
Okay. Another question. You said the last time the road was worked on was in 1997, and it was overlaid.
Right.
And because of the cracks and the potholes and the imperfections on the road, they will reflect through.
That's correct.
So in 24 years, the reflection is what you see today of the previous overlay.
Right. There's a little bit of history with this segment of the road, too. We've... That we're aware of. Originally, this road was paved. We're not sure on what, if it was paved, if there was aggregate base placed, or if it was originally paved on sand or topsoil, as was done in some cases in that time period. After that, the segment of road was gravelled over that first layer of pavement and then paved again in 1997. So there's kind of a sandwiched layer of gravel between two layers of pavement out there. And so overlaying that once again, we feel is a bit of a risk that the city would be taking, and it would be best to reclaim this whole section and have a known base on it.
Would you reclaim both levels of it?
Yeah.
You'd go all the way down?
Yeah.
Get the original one?
Yeah.
And you don't know what the gravel in between is? You'd guess probably.
It probably varies. It's probably just bladed out and paved.
Okay. That's all.
Okay.
You made the comment that it's at the far end of the project, that the electrical is above ground. Has the telephone or the electric company considered burying it at the same time, which could affect schedule a little bit?
Right. We haven't discussed that with utilities yet at this time. That's a discussion that we will have as we, you know, projects proceeding, go into the design phase. There's a utility meeting that's set up, and those discussions can be had. If the... I know from other projects, the electric utility especially, if the city's requesting the overhead power to be buried, it's usually at city cost, okay? So...
Which would jack up the cost of the whole project.
Okay.
Okay. Answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any questions from the council? Okay. Then I will open it up to folks that are in the audience here in the building.
Please, this is your opportunity to come up and say something. So you've got to come up, state your name and address.
Tim Kavanaugh, 12195 Harbor Lane. I guess, you know, Dave, a question for you. I mean, is there any way to work on the cracks and excavate those portions and recompact where it's fracturing and then do a decent overlay? I've driven it many times, obviously. We live on it, and the only area that really seems to be substantially deteriorating as far as the pavement's concerned is up towards Bayview. The rest of it seems to be relatively intact, other than the traverse cracks that are, you know, occurring presently.
In our experience, when you do patch repairs, where you would cut out an area of around a crack or place in the road that's breaking up, yes, you can rework that area. Usually, what's done is a rough patch is then placed in, and then an overlay goes over that. Given the age of this road and the condition of the pavement surface itself, we feel that overlaying it again is really not going to lend itself to the strength of the overall section. And in those patch areas, we're likely going to see, instead of now one crack, we've got a crack on each side of the patch that will come through and show up. So that's kind of a defeating purpose, once you start doing that in numerous areas with transverse cracks.
I noticed on the estimate, there doesn't seem to be a lot of allowance in the estimate, or the budget, if you will, with regard to, you know, any kind of correction of the washout areas and such on the curb. Has that been addressed at all with regard to, or is that part of your contingency, or what you see here with regard to, you know, that correction?
The construction cost estimate does have some extra quantity in it for blacktop material, which would cover a bituminous gutter or curb. We do have some contingency if we decide during design that we'd like to go to concrete curb and gutter. The pricing on that on a lineal foot basis over the past few years, it used to be that bituminous gutter was cheaper, but what we're seeing is it's nearly about the same. So given the choice, I think we'd put in concrete for a more durable surface. Bituminous curb tends to get bladed off with snow plowing and so forth, so we'd probably look at using some of that contingency, an extra quantity in the bid.
Where would that water be then? It would fall on the one side, come across the road?
Right.
And off into that pond? Is that what would be?
That's the likely scenario, is that's where the water's going today. And as far as directing the water, we'd put a spillway at the bottom point there and try to hard armor that so that it wouldn't reroad.
You'd mentioned that there's no right-of-way with regard to the city or anything when it comes down to that portion of the road? Is that what I heard?
That's correct. We don't have record of right-of-way through that section. So basically, what the city has is a prescriptive easement for the area that's been used for maintenance, which includes the clear zone and snow plowing area.
As you and I discussed, that particular curbed area where you're coming off of 16 is a relatively tight curb in there, and the initial excavation was a bit into that hill area. As a result of that, now, in the vegetation overgrowth, the vehicles have a tendency to crowd the centerline, and I've had more than one occasion where cars are coming down and crowding that, and you have to kind of get off on the shoulder, what little there is, in order to avoid, you know, a situation there. So again, I don't know if this were to move forward, if there is any way to somehow slightly readjust that. It's a fairly busy road, relatively speaking, for the area. So, you know, I think that's something that might be considered.
I think we're open to those alternatives to less... to improve safety, improve sightlines. It would involve discussion with the property owner. In that case, if we were widening the clearing, for instance, or needed additional space beyond what we have, what we've been using, because there's no right-of-way there. But I'm more than happy to proceed with those discussions with any property that would be affected and see if we can't establish an agreement there.
Based on your budgeting, have you made adjustments then? Obviously, petroleum is headed north at this point in time, so asphalt and some of those building materials and things like that for roadways are going to likely increase. Have you made adjustments with regard to your cost per cubic yard or whatever the case may be?
Right. The heavy hitter in the cost estimate is usually the blacktop price, the blacktop quantity. That's usually the biggest line item in the construction. We've elevated the unit price in these estimates, anticipating that there could be some increase in cost per ton placed in 2021. So where we were using estimates of around $75 a ton in previous years, now we're looking at an excess of $80 per ton to try to anticipate that. Hopefully, we get good competitive bids and we get good pricing, but that's really the hard crystal ball to try to predict there.
Typically, in the area, how many different contractors does this go out of?
We've seen as many as three paving primes, bit of project in Cross Lake. It usually depends on the scale of the project. If it's a small project, then oftentimes, we only get one bid. So that's kind of the case with this area and the number of paving contractors that might be interested.
Is that up to the city, then? Do you accept or deny with regard to a single bid if there's only one?
Yes. We had a case last year where we had one road that was put on for public bid and received only one bid. The bid was, in our opinion, high under the circumstances, and so that bid was rejected, and that project has been wrapped into this summer's projects.
And again, this will be offered to the contractors as a complete package? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Obviously, a question as a resident here, when it comes down to it, first of all, not being able to speak to the troubles that the snowplows might be having currently with regard to, you know, their removal process and stuff like that. I don't think the road is, you know, in that bad a shape, otherwise, I'd probably be, excuse me, be calling and indicating that I felt the road was a problem. I think, given the conversation here now, it opens up the door, as far as we're concerned, as to the cost escalation. You're looking at an assessment of $4,000 per property at this point in time, but there's a fairly wide range, from what I see and what is proposed, where the assurance is to me as a resident that I'm not going to be paying the upper end on that when it comes down to actual, you know, construction costs, if you will. Because once the job's done and the assessments are made, what kind of leverage do I have when it comes down to making sure that I'm not paying more than I have to?
Tim, I'll speak to that a little bit, but the way that we're going about this
Tim, I'll speak to that a little bit, but I, the way that we're going about this assessment is your assessment is four thousand.
It's, it's locked.
Yep, that's it, regardless, up or down.
Because I thought with the hearings that there was the possibility that that might change.
No, we have a hearing at the end of the project and it's just a formality, a state law that we have to do it, but the price is the price that's set. So it is what it is.
Well, again, when it comes down to it, you know, I think it's a fairly costly venture. I understand, and when it comes down to, you know, whether it be maintenance or replacement, that obviously you have to maintain a schedule with regard to things throughout the city. You can't let it all come due at the same time, because that's problematic also. But from what I can see and where I've seen other roads, it's my feelings at this point in time that, you know, the road could go a bit longer. Again, I'm no asphalt expert when it comes down to it, but I don't think it's causing a tremendous amount of problem, other than, and I would agree and concur, that there is an issue with regard to erosion coming down that hill on the curve as it goes down towards sixteen. That obviously is an issue and it will be need to be addressed.
Very good questions, Tim, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Is it difficult to change it from easement to the right-of-way? I mean, is that a difficult process? I'm surprised it's not a right-of-way.
Well, it, gaining right-of-way can take a lot of different paths to get there. Sometimes it's done with meets and bounds property by writing legal descriptions for permanent easement across property. And the minimum right-of-way width that we'd be seeking would be sixty-six feet, that's the standard width of four-rod road. Other ways to do it would be by right-of-way plat, that's a common way to do it. And also, the city attorney has offered other methods of obtaining right-of-way that we could follow to or explore. But those are the two main, main ways that I've seen right-of-way is obtained.
Is it a lengthy process then?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, come on up.
On the right-of-way issue then, again, Tim Kavanaugh, one-two-one-nine-five Harbor, is that a challenge because of the ownership and all the legalities and such that go into that then with regard to the right-of-way issue?
The, the process can be very simple if all the property owners are willing to participate and convey the right-of-way to the city. Every, every roadway, every situation is different, every property owner's situation is unique. They would be essentially drawing a line where building setbacks would be drawn from, from planning and zoning standpoint, by establishing that easement or right-of-way line. There's some rulings in the courts and our city attorney is not here to speak to this, so I'm going to say I am not an attorney, but just stating what I've seen, where in some cases, the city would need to provide compensation for the taking of right-of-way. In other cases, I've seen property conveyed to the city in permanent easement where it has no compensation, it's just willingly conveyed. So it kind of spans the whole gamut and the lengthier process is if it goes the legal route, if we have one objector along the route that we need to obtain the right-of-way from. Usually, that's a ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty day process to go through eminent domain proceeding.
Yep.
What's the width of the easement? The right-of-way would be sixty-six, what's the width of this current easement? Is it sixty-six?
No, there's, there's no easement at the present time.
I thought you, I thought you said it was a prescriptive easement.
Prescriptive means only the space that the city's been using for maintenance, and that likely varies along the roadway.
One last question for you, Dave, with regard to you'd indicated, is it going to change the weight restrictions on this road? Is it going to change its category or its status with regard to weight limits?
It will improve the, the weight-carrying capacity of the roadway after this project. What's there right now, after looking into some of the suspect areas and, and excavating those, we feel confident that at a minimum, it would meet a seven-ton road design, if not more. So the only way to really ascertain that would be to go out and do some soil borings and geotechnical work. Typically, the city doesn't do that on these. We're seeking to improve the base that's there, it's an established road bed, so we feel pretty confident that we can meet at least that seven-ton range.
Yeah, I mean, it's stood the test of time, the road's holding up pretty well.
And then one last question for me, as a homeowner who has just placed a brand-new driveway, when it comes down to it, you indicate that they're going to properly sawcut or wood sawcut to feather that in correctly to marry up with a brand-new driveway. You're good, thanks again.
Thank you, Tim. Hey, gentleman back there had it. Another two.
Tim Berg, one-two-zero-three-eight Harbor Lane, Bayview Lodge. So my very, Mr. Kavanaugh did a great job, excellent questions, so thank you. I agree with a sentiment that I don't absolutely agree or know that the road needs to be completely torn up. I would like if we could explore further repairing some of those beat-up places on the road and then maybe doing an overlay, trying to save on the cost. With the other two road projects, are they doing the same kind of maneuver where they're going to tear it up and recycle, or are they going to tear up the road and get rid of the old road, or would there be leftover material?
So project areas one through four are full-depth reclamation projects, similar to Harbor Lane. Project area five is on Whitefish Avenue, Hilltop, Woodland and Cool Haven Lane, and those are overlays.
So the material will be left on the road, ground up and left on the base?
Yeah, so what I'm getting to is a few years ago, I was on Public Works and we had torn up the parking lot at the community center and we had material leftover. And I was hoping at that point, we could create a bike path or a walking trail, kind of like West Shore Drive. And since we're doing, you know, Harbor Lane, the scope is a little smaller than I originally thought, I was gonna hope to maybe persuade you guys to at least consider the safety aspect of Harbor Lane. Having been there since eighty-seven, I can tell you a few things with that road. Mr. Kavanaugh pointed it out, when you first turn on to Harbor Lane, you go to go north and you take a right. I've also, over the many number of years, avoided death narrowly, and I've probably been responsible for scaring someone once or twice myself. So I don't know what we can do to improve that sightline, but if we're, if we're going to be there doing the job, I would really, really consider it for safety, trying to improve that specific area. My next question would be in regards to, I think you said there's ten lots in the project site, so I gotta ask, how many lots is Bayview Lodge going to be considered? Looking at one of the pictures that you had posted, is, is the, the new road going to end roughly where the mailboxes are across from Bayview Lodge?
Roughly.
Roughly, okay. And then, I guess my next question at this time, as we have had the same mailbox post since we moved here in eighty-seven, I think there's probably eight to ten mailboxes on there. And reading through the, the letter here, it says that we're going to be required to use a swinging, you know, I'd spent numerous time on Public Works and I've spent numerous time driving these roads and I've seen those swinging mailboxes, and if you ask my opinion, they're more likely to get destroyed by the plows. Our mailboxes, I think I can speak for everyone who has a box on our post, have withstood the test of time, so I would, I don't know who I would ask, but I would strongly request that we be able to maintain the exact same mailbox situation that we have. Other than that, you know, when it comes down to pricing, I think we discussed that at another time, as far as being able to make a payment option or whatnot. Oh, and then I guess the last note that I made here in regards to a timeline, I can tell you with my many years of experience, I think June twelfth is a Saturday, but either way, I know there's an open-ended schedule. I can't stress enough with the amount of people that come in to that road with tourist season, it really cranks up around the middle of June. So I know you have other roads that you gotta do, I don't know what the traffic level is on those, but I would consider probably putting Harbor Lane first, just for safety reasons on that road. And lastly, I'll just thank you for your time, and if you can maybe just consider a walking path, I know there's many residents on that road that would be in agreeance with this walking path, I've recently spoke to numerous of them, and I know that through Boyd Lodge, I've been told that ideal corners would be probably willing to step up and do their part to, to finish a walking path from the beginning to Harbor Lane all the way down to, I think it's Silver Peak Road. Something to consider, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Tim. Dave, have you looked and knew a path on that road, have you had any interaction with that at all?
It's been discussed at Public Works in the past years. There hasn't been any right-of-way or conceptual layouts completed or meetings held with property owners that I'm aware of, at least a formal meeting. I, I think possibly Ted has had some discussions with some of the property owners out there.
Ted, could I get you just to comment on that?
Yeah, the one gentleman that right through the curves, right after Boyd's Lodge, Lodge there, I have talked to him and he's willing to allow us a, a right-of-way as long as there's some kind of agreement that holds him harmless, anybody that's crossing his property falls or whatever. So he was willing to grant something to get a path through there, because there's just not enough between the trees and that, so there was a kind of a natural spot to take it through there. I have talked to the other township and this is a while back, but they're willing to do something with us, whether it was a gravel path or a paved path, or even they've talked about basically tree bark, you know, we get all that bark we get from growing power for other things, we could use that too, so.
So the landowner you talked to, is a substantial piece of land, has he got, or is it a hundred-foot chunk?
No, he's got one of the bigger properties up there.
Yeah, so it would help out a lot.
Yeah, it'd get us through that corner right after the lodge, so, and round down, down there a little bit. And I think he would work with us a little bit, even some tree clearing too, he's been a good, good person to work with, so.
Yeah, well, that would be pretty interesting to pursue that.
The other thing I just wanted to mention, you know, that they're worried about the, how people, the speeds and things like that, one of the things we, that I haven't even mentioned it, Dave, I've been thinking about it in my head, is we've put striping on the center of the road and it kind of pulls the car into that lane and it seems to slow them down a little bit, and that's not all places, but when you're going through the curves, it, and that was one of the things I was gonna talk to Dave. The other thing over time is these edges of the road, especially on those couple curves, have chipped away and chipped away and chipped away, and it's made the road a little narrower over time. We patched them, but it just doesn't hold, there's, on that sand, it just doesn't stay anymore. But that's one of the things, by getting the road reestablished and, and hopefully maybe that center striping on it, we could control it and maybe slow them down a little bit through there, too.
So would the bike paths start? It wouldn't come to sixteen.
We could, we could, you could bring it down and attach it to the road someplace down by these folks' place down there on sixteen, or where it, up on the star park.
Isn't that a narrow stretch of the road with minimal access anyway, because of the easement right-of-way?
I believe that part there, we have right-of-way, right on the first part of, at the beginning of it, don't we, Dave?
The county right-of-way has a site.
A wide area in there. Okay. It's something we can look at.
I mean, it just sounds like there's not a lot of room now, and if we had that, it's gonna be less, but there's a lot of people use that, so.
Yes, there's, there's, there's couples that walk every day from the township into town to get their newspapers, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Ted. Mr. Bob, you got anything, or are you gonna just watch?
No, I guess not.
Nothing to add?
I think there is, I think there is covered pretty good.
Okay.
There, there is a lot of bikers on that, you know, coming down a hill, pass miles, a lot of bikers on walkers.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think that would be important to look at. Does the council have any other comments or questions? You done? Okay, I think we'll close the assessment hearing then. Thank you very much for your input.